Gentlemen, before we start, I would just ask that we take a moment of silence to remember Mr. Bob Ferreira and his dedication to multiple boards and committees in this town and for all the help he gave our town over the years. And I'd just like to extend my condolences to the Ferreira family. Thank you. First item on the agenda, minutes for approval. We have July 9th, 2024, joint meeting with this Board of Selectmen and the Commissioner of Trust Funds. Is there a motion to approve the revised minutes?
For July 9th, 2024, motion to approve.
I'm going to sustain it. I was not there for that. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have March 19th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All right. We have no appointments. We're going to go right into an executive session. Executive session under Master General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions of contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Police Department Administrative Assistant, if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body, and the Board will return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We are in executive session. Is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Roll call vote, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
I am a yes.
And I am a yes. We are now in regular session. Gentlemen, new business one. Discuss what we just had a conversation about. After review. Police Department Administrative Assistant, review matters presented, votes may be taken.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjust the administrative assistant's salary to the budgeted amount of $46,180.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda, COA building. Ms. Golda, I will ask you to come up for the next two. We have a COA building use policy update, and we also have new business number three, building repairs and maintenance. I ask Lauren to put together a list of areas of concerns. We can start with your building use policy, please.
All right. So upon my onboarding, one of the things that I did realize is that we do have a lot of groups that utilize the building after hours. So this policy is basically set to make sure that the groups that we do have utilizing the building, that we do have, you know, something that they can follow. I did notice that we have fees associated with using the building. Currently, the groups that we have coming in are not being charged. I'm not sure as to why, and that's okay. But I was just looking to possibly, I was looking to lower the fees, number one, and number two, implement them. I think it would be great to have some money coming in, and I don't want to break any of the banks of any of the groups that we do have coming in, but I think it would be useful to have some, you know, some revenue coming in if they're using our building.
Right.
And I did make minimal changes. I did, I hope that you all have the current policy, and then I have the newer one. I did make minimal changes to the new one. I don't know if you want me to go through with the new changes that I made, or I don't want to, or what you guys want to...
You don't really have to go too in-depth through it. We've all had a chance to bros there, and we had spoken a couple of months ago on this, and I essentially told you that I feel fully confident between you and your board that you can come up with a policy you felt comfortable with.
Yes.
So ultimately, it really comes down to that. It's something, do you feel comfortable? I looked it over. I think you did a really good job. I know we had gone through different communities to kind of get a good basis and a balance.
Yep.
Like you said, to not take advantage of groups and stuff like that. But we've also got to face the reality that sometimes, even if they do pick up after themselves, there's extended problems that now the town has to focus on cleaning up sometimes and really focus on stuff that you shouldn't have to, and at least getting something for it. And I also like the fact that you have groups, and it affects different levels of groups differently, and I appreciate that. I think that's a good thing.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
If I could just make one comment on the closing time for buildings of 11:30 PM. I think that's a little late for our facilities to be used. I don't know if you have anybody that's been using the facility since you've been here. I know you've only been here for a short period of time, Lauren, but, and great job, by the way, in your stat. And I just don't know if 11:30 is a little too late for that facility to be used with random groups of people that were not, it's not all town folks, right? It could be outsiders and things all the way. So I just look at 11:30, and I don't know if there's room for adjustment. I kind of thought 10:00 would be nice, but I don't know if you have people that...
Yeah. There isn't anybody staying that late as of right now. So I think that would be more so if they're, you know, a private function or something like that, but I think 10 o'clock is a reasonable hour to...
It was 11:30 in the previous one.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, I just checked it out.
I haven't seen this document. I did look at the old one, and I'm like, wow, thank God she brought this back to fruition and going to re-implement it so that everybody is paying something. But that's just, you know, my comment on that, on the timeframe. I don't know how the Board feels of doing a 10:00 PM instead of 11:00 PM, so...
I would agree with that myself. I can't imagine, you know, a private function. I mean, we're not really hosting weddings there, so I can't imagine anything past 10:00. With the history of the groups that do utilize the COA, I would be open to 10:00 as well, if that's all right.
Yeah, of course. And then on the end, on this new, we got a revised one from you, Lauren?
Yes.
And it's not a part of the other one, but I did notice, because I did have a comment on the old one about something, if details would be needed, right, that they would have to make those accommodations, right, and notify the police department that you are making a recommendation based on the size of a function or whatever, or if details needed. And we like to be paid in advance for details so that we can, the chief can then turn around and give the okay and approve the detail, right? Is that proper to say, chief, while I have you in the room?
Yes, it is, especially with, I'd say, new vendors or vendors that really rarely hire details.
So in the back of it, on this little page, it says 90 days prior to event full payment of rental fee, all fees and forms. I just, I just think that window is like, I might not know I want to do something at the Council on Agent 90 days in advance, right? So, I mean, I don't know if that just says 90 days for something that we'll use, but we make accommodations if somebody came in and said, hey, I want to do a small anniversary party for Grandma and Grandpa, and it's only 30 days out, but this policy says 90. Are we going to stop that person from using a facility if it's available? I just think 90 days is, you know, when I was looking at the fees for the details, I was thinking 30 days advance notice, right, so we can get the payment in, and the town, the check goes to the town, and we can notify the PD and say, we've been, we received payment for our police detail on X date, please schedule details, and we're all set to go, right? So it's just my thinking outside the box with everything else that I think of that's going on in the town on how we arrange things. 90 days is a huge window. So I don't know if that's something that you would want to modify as well. I'll leave that up to you. If you would want to modify the length of time to even, you know, 45 days, whatever it is, right, and try to do your best to schedule 45 days. Again, it's, I would leave it up to your discretion if somebody came in only in 30 days and they could make all the payments and say, okay, get along. You're fine with it. That's cool with me.
You can actually work that into the policy, too. Changes to timeframes can be made at your discretion.
Okay. Now, any changes that we make now, do I have to get this approved once again, or like any thing after that?
You have to inform your Board.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just don't want to, you know, have to come back again and wait, like, I know you, your time is very valuable, so I don't want to waste it with COA.
It's just a, it's just a recommendation on how I view things and looking at it. If somebody wanted to book it 90 days, you don't always know 90 days in advance, right? Your family could contact you and say, hey, do you have any place we can do this function? And it's 30 days away. I actually had somebody who just called me up for a child's birthday party. They wanted to do it over at the library at the pavilion. I said, well, we have a nice pavilion at Council on Agent. Now, I don't know what happened, but he said it's in two weeks, right? That's kind of what made me start thinking of that. There are people randomly.
Right.
So we'll leave that to your discretion, whatever it may be. I mean, if we can just give the COA...
You can make the motion subject to those changes.
Yeah.
The other issue that you should cover, that change.
So I did add in, I think that was part of the updated policy, having the group pay for having a custodian or just staff on site. Our regular groups, I wouldn't be necessarily concerned with, that we know that they're coming in for their, the regular meetings, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. This would be more so, just as an example, a group had come to me, I have a meeting with them next month about them hosting a fundraiser for, it's a nonprofit. But just going through the whole motion of issuing the key and an alarm code and the whole nine yards, I just thought it would be beneficial to have somebody on site that's there to help set up tables and whatever that they would need. So I did add that little piece in, that they would be responsible for the compensation of having a staff member there.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's similar to what the school does with some of their facilities.
Whatever Ms. Golda thinks is in the best interest of the Council on Agent and the trustees, I have full faith in them.
Mr. Kelly, do you need a motion from us?
A motion to accept the policy as with suggested revisions.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Making it easy on you.
Yeah.
All right. Next item, building repairs and maintenance. I had asked Ms. Golda to go through and give me a list of her concerns. I know some of these have been addressed in the past where we had some funds from the state.
And the reserve.
And the reserve. But I want to make sure that Ms. Golda's in a situation where she feels like this work will be taken care of, and I want to update her. And also, she has other concerns that we don't know about. I asked her to write those down as well.
So I think, we'll start with the smaller ones, I guess. So upon my onboarding, I was informed that the roof did need repairs. As far as I know, it's not a full roof. I think it's just, you know, small portions of the roof that do need to be repaired, new gutters and downspouts. And then most recently, we were having some issues with the AC. From what I've been told by the AC company, it was just the fan that had burnt out, the fan and the motor. So we were waiting for the part. Unfortunately, it came the other day. They ordered the wrong motor. So we were just, you know, kind of hanging by a string right now, waiting for them to come back. The rest of the building is cool. It's just in that one, in the main function room. We have one unit that's working, the other one isn't, but we're able to, you know, keep the building cool. So I know that it was discussed potentially getting quotes on updating the system, but when we did further research, it was replaced in 2020. So I wasn't sure if that's still something that we want to explore or focus on, you know, some other issues at hand. And then, of course, the plumbing, my favorite topic. But those were the major ones that are kind of just on my, on my radar right now.
I think we've had a lot of problems with the septic pipes going out to the septic system, and we flushed it. We spent an exorbitant amount of money for somebody to come in and flush. And I know now that we're still having problems because of the pitch of the pipes, right?
Yes.
I guess that's the reason why. And I know that we've changed the toilet bowls and stuff, and they're flushing less water. So maybe the less water's not pushing it down like it used to to the septic tank. I think that's probably something, it's, if we got to start repitching pipes, that's a huge expense for us to take on. And the only way it won't be a huge expense is if we utilize our DBW like we did at the library building. We ran two new pipes from each one of the restrooms to the septic system with Mr. Menard and his crew, and put brand-new six-inch pipe going in there, right? So we have that capability in-house to do it. But I know that the pipe would have to be changed out in the cellar as well. But then when you get outside the wall, you'd have to do the pitch. So we'd have to have Mr. Menard go by and take a look at it and see if that's something that we could do and put more of a pitch on the pipe. So I think that would be the best route to go for cost savings.
We've installed the...
The flushometers.
Flushometers.
I'm very well-versed in the...
Unfortunately, right. And that kind of reverses the, well, it gives velocity to the water.
They were flushing, the new toilets, it was 1.5 gallons. Now it's 3.5 with these flushometers. So we're hoping that that's enough water to get everything because the septic's on the other side of the building compared to where the bathrooms are.
Has there been any issues since?
So it was installed on the 7th, 15th. So, knock on wood, right now, no, we're good. But I was told by three separate plumbers that we've had out that that potentially is a Band-Aid fix.
We should, we should probably have the building, the facility, looked at by Mr. Menard, right? Because all you're doing now is using more water, right?
Yeah.
And I think most of us know water's the most precious commodity on the face of the earth, right? So I hate to be wasting water just to get it to where it was going before, right? So if we can change the slope of a pipe, there's an initial cost, but overall, I think that's the best for the building and the facility in general, so...
We also have a bunch of stubs on the pipe going across the building that go nowhere. So they're thinking that causes some of the issue with...
On the main line, it does weigh out. So I think everything's getting stuck right at that, you know, where everything kind of connects into the main line and then goes out that way.
We could probably chop out a section of where we need to downstairs, put in some new pipe in, you know, and it gets a little cooler. And Dan's not doing drainage work because we have certain timeframes for Dan. He's got to get out and mend the road, do a big drainage project. So we can try to fit in little parts of the project, and then maybe when we get outside the building, maybe if we just do the internal part of the building, it works out, it's, everything's good. We could change the pitch from there so it flows. Something that we can figure out, I'm sure. But I do, I think we owe it to Ms. Golda and the staff at Council on Agent to address that, so...
Yeah, I agree. Get Dan over at his convenience, have him look. What are we doing with, Mr. Kelly, didn't we have Rep Schmitt and Strauss? Did they actually put money towards the AC system and the roof?
It was the roof and the bathrooms that we put money towards. We've got 16,250 left.
Yes.
So that roof, I know that roof's not that alt, and I know that there's pieces of the roof that need to be looked at, sections of the roof, but not a complete roof, right? So I think we need to do that as well.
The earmark was for taking care of that deficient section of the roof, and also gutters and downspouts because they're growing under the roof.
Prior to my onboarding, some of the money from the earmark grant was used for the handicap doors. So the doors were installed. We recently just added in the buttons. So everything's in working order, but I did want to just mention that. Some of that money went there, too.
Yeah, we should definitely get somebody down there to take a look at the roof and actually give us a proper idea of what it's going to cost to fix it and what it's going to entail.
It's not the complete roof.
Correct. But I'm not going to get up there and tell you what it needs, so... Looks like you've accomplished some stuff in the meantime.
I did add some happy stuff again. Some things that we were able to work on and are very excited about.
The water gods just didn't like it.
All right. I think we got a plan now, and as, I don't want to jinx anything, but if anything else does come up, just keep me posted. You can let Mr. Kelly know. You can CC me on it, let me know, or just call me directly if he's busy or not here. We'll keep a running list to make sure that it doesn't get out of control and make sure we can get it fixed.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, Lauren.
Gentlemen, I want to ask to pass over number four. Business number five, tree warden letters of interest. Review matters presented, votes may be taken. Gentlemen, I know you have multiple letters in front of you. I assume everybody had the time to read through them. Any questions and concerns, comments?
I don't, I know that when I announced the opening after the passing away of good friend Norman Fedett, I asked for somebody, hopefully that had tree experience. I think that's important, right? And I do notice that Mr. Scott Baldwin sent in a very nice letter of interest, and he just, and at the end of his letter, he said the same thing. My wish is for this position to be filled by the most qualified individuals committed to the town of Akishna and its residents, and puts the town's best interest at hand first and foremost. Personally, I would like to extend to our families deepest sympathies to the family of late Norman Fedett, who adoredly served our town for many years as tree warden. It is a significant loss to his family and friends as well as our town residents. And then we have a letter similar to that from Mr. Stanley Tomquitz, which has an abundance of experience in tree cutting and arbory. So, and he also mentioned Mr. Norman Fedett in the form of tree warden. So to both of these gentlemen, I thank you for recognizing Mr. Norman Fedett. And...
Gentlemen, just to let you know, we did get another letter from Mr. Eric DeBarros, but it did come in after you gentlemen saw your book. So I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, but...
I see it right here, Mr. Chairman. I didn't get to read it, but I am familiar with Mr. DeBarros and his, and his work as well. So, I mean, this is just a temporary appointment.
Correct.
Right? Until the next election. And I think it's the last Tuesday now by the new bylaw, last Tuesday in April. Is that correct?
I believe so.
I think that's the way it goes. So it's a, it's a short-term appointment, and then anybody can run for the position.
Is there a motion to appoint any of the particularly candidates?
Just because we had Mr. Stanley Tomquitz as in before, Mr. DeBarros came in after the deadline, no disrespect to you, Mr. DeBarros, but Mr. Stanley Tomquitz does have the experience, so I'd feel comfortable with that appointment.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And to Mr. Baldwin, again, thank you very much for your interest. And I know he said something about taking some classes, so thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for your kind words for our former tree warden. Again, very nice of you to mention.
Agreed.
Right. I think Stanley's going to be a great, great guy to put in. And they also have equipment. If you need trees moved and stuff, that's a great choice.
He's got decades of experience. I know you have, you have really good experience, too. So Eric, I would encourage you that if you want to be on the ballot for tree warden, if Mr. Tomquitz might do it for six months, seven months, whatever it is, until April, right, he might say, I'm all set, don't really care about doing this anymore. If you know Mr. Tomquitz, you can have that dialogue with him. And if he has no interest in doing it, then feel free to put your name in, right?
Yeah, no, I honestly just put in because I knew there was a vacancy for the remainder of the term. It's not something that I was looking to do for a long-term situation. It was just something to help out the town in getting through, especially with different areas that I know and realize, like especially on Mendel Road, there's a couple of trees there that I would like to make suggestion that might be in the town's best interest to get them on the ground before, I mean, while the work's being done, and that road is shut down. Not sure if you guys are still doing bidding for like the day rate or whatever, but I know tree, single tree rate is, you know, I am knowledgeable about, it'd be much cheaper to be able to just throw it in the road than it would be to have someone come out with a truck and have to use the bucket truck to go up and dismantle a tree piece by piece. There's a few really rotten ones on that road, especially that.
I'm glad you brought that to our attention.
Hey, maybe they could...
I think we'll have a conversation with Mr. Menard, and we'll look at those trees if you want, and maybe I can go with you. We could look at those trees that are on, as it's on-town property, right? See, that's the key.
Yeah, yeah. No, they're in within, what, we got six foot, right? Four or six, 46?
It depends on the layout of the road, right? Mr. Menard has all those documents in the DBW office, and the late Norman Fedett was always good about calling DBW office because that layout of the road does change depending on where it is.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's five feet, sometimes it's four feet, some could be 10 feet, right? So that's what you need to know. As a tree warden, you have to make that communication with DBW, find out where the landmarks are, what the layout of the road is, right? From the center of the road, you'll measure out and go, not our tree. I know Norman's called me in previous years when he's been tree warden. He's called me up and says, I, you know, I can't get a hold of the office, but I need to know the width of this road, the layout of this road, because, you know, the resident wants me to cut this tree, but it's a live tree, and I don't believe it's on-town property, right? And Norman was very, very good at doing that. He was, he was an incredible man. He was a great tree warden. And I just hope that our next tree warden has that same discipline as Mr. Fedett did.
Yeah. And I would just strongly suggest that even if this, you'll see if you call me and we go out, and I'll show you a couple that I picked up. Just driving down the road, it's just something that I have a good iPhone nowadays.
Yeah.
I'm like, oh, look at that thing, you know? But it might be something in your best interest to just let the, let the, even if it's not on there, let the homeowner know, like, hey, you guys might be able to get it down now before. Because even though with the way the law states, even though it might not be on-town property, all right, so it's close enough to the road where if it did fall down onto town property, it would be town's responsibility to clean up. So say we have a hurricane or something, and the tree falls into the road, there's an imaginary line that goes up. So it might be in everybody's best interest to just be like, hey, we'll let you do it while they're doing the work here. Let's set up a date, see if you can get a company to come out and take this tree out while it's feasible and everything's shut down.
Yeah.
You know, no more details, no more all that stuff to drastically cut down the cost for everybody.
Mr. Chairman, through you, the tree warden position, is that even a paid position, or is it...
It's like $750.
Uh, I believe it said a thousand, or maybe it's 20,000.
We moved it to a thousand.
So where I'm going with this is, you know, it's a tree warden, right? But you've got, you've got a guy like Scott Baldwin, who I know personally, who's a great guy, right? A lot of enthusiasm would be fantastic. Would be a great tree warden. You got Eric, who, I mean, is there any reason why we can't have like a deputy and a deputy, you know, to volunteer position by and large and, you know, figure out a way? Because I'm imagining when you've got one tree warden, and you're in a storm, and there's trees down, and there's all kinds of mayhem, can one person really handle it?
Well, DBW, when it comes to like a hurricane, DBW automatically is activated and it's that kind of stuff. It's more of, it's more of maintenance of roadway. The tree warden would be notified of a diseased tree, an unsafe limb, you know, hanging over the road. So that's really where the tree warden plays.
You know, is it, is it inconceivable that we look at and say, why not build a little bit of a bench here and somebody, you know, especially when you have an instance, when you've got two other people who really want to serve the town and have an interest, and like, why not take a team approach? I don't know if there's a way to do it or not. I don't know, Jim.
So you'd have to wait for town meeting and budget hearings and stuff like that. There's the town, tree warden makes determinations. There's an expense budget in that budget for him to hire folks to actually do the work.
Because you've got to be licensed and insured and work around wires, right?
Yeah, it's got to be OSHA, OSHA approved.
So anyways, that's the...
But I like, we have a DMN, right? We have all these volunteers for DMN.
I'd like to constrict up the deputy tree warden for the simple fact that we have a deputy wiring inspector, deputy building inspector, right? So it's not unheard of that you just build something like that in. So it's something we can discuss in budget season, right?
And one more other thing, as I've already mentioned it before, I think there might be another asset to the town. Maybe if we, instead of, maybe, I think it's a good time to maybe rejuvenate what, like you guys are saying, making it a team or whatever, but also maybe having, getting a department just for tree work at the, in the barn, maybe not Dan Menard being responsible like for Haven. For Haven has their own truck, their own chipper, their own everything. So they can do twice as much work with half the amount of pay. Oh, because they're not paying out, say, 1,500 a day. They got four guys that they have part-time that they have, and they give them a salary. Like, you get $20 an hour.
That's a huge, so Eric, we're in massive budget constraints now, and to add staff and create a new department, buy trucks, buy equipment, we're talking a half a million dollars the town doesn't have.
I was just making up...
The town just doesn't, we would never be able to accommodate that as a small town. I mean, even if you had a small, I mean, you wouldn't even be able to put a staff. You don't have enough work year-round to have, you could have part-time staff.
No, it would be an on-call, like, I was looking at it as an on-call thing. Like, you'd have like people like me, like, hey, I'm on-call, like, they, buddy of mine used to do it for Haven. He wasn't on there all the time. He'd be on-call. So they call him up, and they say, hey, we got a tree that's going down the road. So he clocked in. He'd say it took him four, him and the crew took him four hours to clean it up. They got paid for their four hours, and then they're done. It's not like a salary like, like, someone like the annual, like, you're getting 40 hours, 40 hours. No, it's a, it's a call-as-you-go, you know? And you don't need, especially something like that, you don't need to spend a half a million. I just picked up a bucket check for $3,000.
I don't, I don't want to interject, but this was just an appointment. We can't get into too many budget things. But I talked to you enough, Eric. Just run it by me, give me some details offline, and I can bring it up at a future one.
Just an observation.
Thanks for the input, though. I know more about trees now than I did 10 minutes ago. Gentlemen, next item on the agenda, special...
Gentlemen, next item on the agenda, special town meeting for fall. So, Mr. Kelly, as of right now, do we have people submitting articles that this is 100% definite needed?
We, yes. We have articles coming in from the school, especially the authorization to do a five-year bus contract to save money.
Gentlemen, any questions, comments, concerns?
And there's, there potentially could be articles because of the building issues that the school department has. We're waiting on those.
I mean, if this, what, it feels kind of ridiculous to already be talking about a fall town meeting when we just got out of the spring town meeting basically thirty-some odd days ago, right? And I know that this year is the primaries and presidential elections with the town clerk, availability of schools and things of the like. I just don't know what funds would be available and if free cash would actually be certified by that time. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not, I don't know how you, what we would be expending for funds at September 30th.
Does feel early.
It would be articles.
You need a tax rate, right? Isn't it?
Articles for what? If you don't have money, you know, that's my point, right? So, if you don't have free cash, normally you do fall town meetings to fund things of the like is from free cash. Free cashes have been certified, right? Free cash from last year is gone. So, what's, funds are available to expend outside of some emergency, if the school had an emergency to fund, you know, building problems, and we take that for stabilization.
It's more authorizations complying with the mandates of state law, that it has to be from a town meeting to give the approval to do those, for example, the five-year contract, which would save considerably amount of money over the five years.
Right, it just, it wouldn't hurt setting a date, and if we got closer to the date, we had to, we didn't need to do it.
Do what we did.
You just cancel it.
With annual, we can...
You just cancel it if there's no need to do it, right? If there's nothing of urgency, right?
Yeah.
And we'll get into too many details on a subject matter that we didn't fund in the spring town meeting, but, you know, if, if we don't have free cash, there's no, there's no way we can do that either. So, we can have that dialogue offline.
All right, and we can always extend it later, like we did with annual too, if we need to.
Again, I think they went with September 30th deadline because I talked to Miss Labonte today, she was doing ballots for the primaries, right? And then you have the presidential in November.
We'd end up putting it back to the end of November.
It could end up being kicked out.
First we go December. Or we'd be talking Christmas.
And if there's any issue that Judy needs rectified before you set the tax rate, we could do it at this town meeting.
As long as you were setting the tax rate lower, not up. That's the other problem. The more you spend, the more your taxes go up.
I don't want to put any money articles on it.
Well, that's pretty boring.
Be a quick meeting. All right. Is there a motion to set the date for the special town meeting in the fall?
We move to set and call the fiscal year 25, Kuschnit Falls, special town meeting to meet at the Albert F. Ford Middle School, 708 Middle Road, Kuschnit on Monday, September 30th, 2024 at 7:00 PM with all articles and petitions to be submitted to the town clerk's office and the board of selectmen's office by the close of business 4:00 PM, August 26, 2024.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven, Finance Department fiscal 26 budget review of manage presented. Mr. Kelly?
Uh, this is a draft I'd like the board to look at, a memo that would be sent out to all departments. I don't need any response from the board, I just want to start the conversation. My very preliminary revenue estimate from fiscal year 25 revenue to fiscal year 26, considering that there are a couple parts of the fiscal 25 budget that were one-time costs, one-time being the money from the overlay that was used for a one-time old colony cost, et cetera. You're looking at a 1.46% increase, and I'm surprised at this number, but just the quick back-of-the-envelope estimate, $527,000 and $527. It's...
It's not good.
You're, in bad years, you've looked at 700 to 750,000 dollar increase. The problem is, as far as your levy revenue, you're looking at probably 3% is the rosiest, depending on the new growth figures. As far as local receipts, you're looking at maybe 4%, probably 3%. When I looked with Mr. Gaspar, we were looking at the various categories, and other than that one year that they added 700,000 to chapter 70, you're looking at the best year is 1.5% increase in local aid for the state. That's where you're getting hurt.
Yeah.
And then the other sources, like I said, will go down because you're not going to be putting 132,000 and change from the overlay. So, I think this discussion has to start now because the departments have to know that I'm going to be looking at a zero level funded salary budget to maybe a 1% increased salary budget depending on mandated contractual increases. And that's bottom-line budget.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at a level funded bottom-line budget of level for expenses or a 5% decrease bottom-line level budget, and that includes increases in utilities, et cetera.
I think it's important to start tackling this now, and I agree. This way, we don't have to go through what we went through leading up to this town meeting, especially Mr. Gaspar. I know Seeburn just bedroomed out of that office so he can go home for a change. So, getting on top of this now is definitely going to help lessen any problem we're going to run into. So, I think it's a good thing to start paying attention, like you said, now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's, the last year was an extremely troubling year to balance the budget, as you gentlemen know. And when I was looking at all the recap sheet and the revenue numbers with Mr. Kelly, and we've, we've changed some of the one-time revenue line items to try to accommodate that deficit last year and accommodate some of our budget increases that we had last year. It was an extremely difficult year. We don't have that flexibility in revenue line items again this year. I think Mr. Kelly and I, we agreed on certain line items that we have in revenue. And again, it's one of those things where you only, it's only good practice to put a budget up to maybe 75% of those line items. We've hit that mark, we've reached that mark. Mr. Kelly and I were uncomfortable doing it, but it was the only way to accommodate some of the budget increases that we had, old colony being the biggest, school being second, police being third, health insurance pensions, those are fixed costs that we, you know, we had to swallow, we had to figure out how to fund it. We, I think we, the board and the town administrator and the FinCom did an excellent job getting rid of that budget deficit, but it was extremely difficult, and we'll face, I think, more difficulty this year if we don't get everybody on the same playing card and make everybody in this early conversation understand where we're at with revenues, and we just, you know, we're kind of being handcuffed, right, with revenues. And with the state pulling back, as Mr. Kelly alluded to, it's making it even more difficult on smaller towns like us that don't have a lot of opportunity to increase revenue.
Correct.
You know, with that said, well, hopefully we'll just, every month we'll have conversations and see where we're at. You know, the state is always trying to, they're trying to retract as much chapter 70 as they can. So, it's no longer, you know, we're getting an extra 90, $100,000 a year, they're starting to pull that in, and they, quite honestly, I think they have a plan, the state has a plan to try to eliminate state funding, right, at some point. You know, it might be a decade down the road, but they're slowly weaning us down on the percentage of money that they're giving us, and it's making us more reliant on the local taxpayer, which is extremely troubling. So, hopefully we'll be able to figure it out again this year. But we all have to do our due diligence with our budgets, and, you know, somebody asked just won't be able to be provided this year.
Correct.
So, everybody's got to play their role. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, moving on, staff appointments.
I'd like to have this passed over.
Certainly.
And we'll discuss it on a later date.
General, Chapter 268A, Section 19 declaration. Gentlemen, we have a disclosure from Selecting Boarder. We have to vote to accept his disclosure because he does have family members that work for the town. All I really need from you gentlemen, because we did approve this months ago, is a vote.
Motion to approve the disclosure.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd also like to bring up one other one that you don't have in your book. We don't have to vote on it, but I want to acknowledge it. Our town clerk also gave me a copy of a disclosure form, similar position. She has trouble every year finding election workers and ends up asking her son or daughter to show up and help break down machines and stuff. She just wanted to be acknowledged. We don't need to actually vote to accept it, as long as we acknowledge that she submitted it to us, that's all we really need.
Very good.
All right. We're going to end new business on a good note. Annual cruise night discussion. I'm going to leave this to you, Mr. Gaspar.
Well, it's, it's nice to be able to have cruise night again. We've, we started that in the 150th birthday of the Town of Kuschnit, the sesquicentennial birthday of the Town of Kuschnit in 2010. It happened to be the year that I was elected to the board of selectmen. I worked with Mr. Catino as a town administrator. He was always a critical component of our cruise night. When he announced his retirement, I kind of jumped in that seat for Mr. Catino and took over some of those responsibilities along with Mr. Matt Lopes, that's been doing it since the start, and his family was instrumental in our sesquicentennial ceremonies that we had as a town, which were beautiful ceremonies. And we've continued cruise night on as a tradition, and we, you know, we couldn't do it in 2020 and 21. I think we did it in '22, but then in '23, Mr. Lopes was having knee surgery. He just couldn't get out and about to do the fly of things and attract the crowd, so we put it off last year. And he called me up and said he's good to go this year, and I said, "Well," they said, "we'll put it out on the board of selectmen's agenda and see if we approve the cruise night." But I know this year we're going to be doing a DJ instead of a band, so we're going to try to change things up a little bit this year. And hopefully, well, like all other years, we'll have a very successful cruise night.
Yeah. I think, I think the entire town appreciates it, it's nice. And I know I, myself, I appreciate it, and thank you for making sure it came back, and thanks to Mr. Lopes for his recovery and getting right back into action.
Couldn't do it without Matt, right? And I think it's kind of, we want to, I know you're going to be involved with me this year, getting cars parked and things of the like, that's probably one of the more difficult things, is getting everybody to listen to you, right? Get those cars parked without creating any damage to them.
Yep.
I want to thank Sergeant Tommy Carew for meeting with Mr. Kelly and I, and Mr. Tommy Fallon, Chief Fallon from the fire department, meeting with us the other day for a public safety meeting and how we're going to coordinate that function. Mr. Carew was great, Mr. Fallon's been great to us, Mr. Kelly's been great. We're all on the same page, so all we need is, I definitely want to have the board's approval to have this cruise night. So, it's Thursday, August 29th, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, we will park cars, we will block the road off, we'll be here in the center of the town, we're going to, we're going to start blocking off the road, I guess, at like somewhere around 4:15, so our employees can leave the buildings and right around 10 past 4, quarter past 4, our police staff will move in along with EMA and start posting up and blocking off the road, and then we can start, once the roads are blocked off and we get an all-clear signal from PD, whoever's on staff that night, the details, and the officer in charge will give me the heads-up, and we can start rolling cars out to the street and parking them. So, even after that, it's just, everybody has fun.
Yep, sounds good. Is there a motion to approve the annual cruise night?
So, move.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You already did enough work, you don't need to second.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you think we could ask the chief of police to give you and Mr. Gaspar a whistle so you can park the cars?
Well, I have an internal, I have an internal whistle that I communicate with all the drivers, so I don't need a little rough-humming whistle. And as long as the, the drivers are always very good to me, I make sure that when they're coming out of the St. Francis Church, which I will notify the pastor, I will notify Blue Point of this function.
Mr. Chairman, I made a mistake as far as number eight, there's a gentleman here I'd like to introduce.
Oh, okay, that's right. Staff appointments, let's jump back real quick. Conservation agent.
The other, the other parts of the agenda, I'd like those of them.
Four scores. Mr. Minton, if you'd like to introduce yourself and...
Mr. Minton has been interviewed, he's been recommended to this board by the Conservation Commission. It's a part-time conservation agent position, and we're very impressed with his background, and we're also very impressed that he is wanting to take the bull by the horns and get started and take things and go forward. And I think you know the chair of the ConCom is very pleased that we have got this...
Be good to have an agent again.
Well, I'm excited to start, I was happy to get the call back. I don't know how much of my background I need to go into, but I'm excited to be part of the Town of Kuschnit, working on conservation wetlands.
Tell the people at home a little bit about your background.
I'm a retired federal biologist, I worked for NOAA, not the boat guy, but the National Oceanographic Atmospheric Administration. Over 30 years, and I did a whole range of things for them, including going to sea, worked out in New Bedford for a number of years on draggers, scallopers, done, worked in Alaska doing biology at sea, worked on endangered species, disentanglement, have a background in fishing gear analysis, so I managed to warehouse down in Rhode Island whenever this gear is pulled off these entangled whales, I'd be the first person to get it, or one of the first people to get it, and we'd work with the fishing industry. It's not really an industry, we'd work with fishermen, small business owners, and we'd take a look at the gear and try to determine where it was from. Is it fishing gear? Is it Canadian, is it US? I've got a, I went to school many years ago for aquatic biology and chemistry, and I went to grad school down at University of Rhode Island, and I, that was a policy degree, but while I was there, I ran into Professor Frank Golet, who was the wetlands ecologist that, one of the authors of the Cordon et al., that was the classification system for wetlands. So, spent a little extra time down at URI, and during that time, I worked on the Galilee salt marsh restoration, which is the, the salt marsh that's cut off by the escape road from Galilee back up to Point Judith, and we reintroduced water, but I did a bunch of the, we did a bunch of the pre-restoration biology, you know, it's just what's there, you know, so are we going to have an effect? It's kind of ironic, when I got out of grad school, I wanted to work in wetlands, I was kind of inspired, and the only job I could find was going back to sea. So, many years later, here I am, and... So many years later, here I am, and I, I saw the, the posting and I, I do, a lot of the work I did was whether it was work, working with the regulated community, whether it was fishermen. I worked on salmon restoration up in Maine, where we were working with blueberry growers, forestry people, um, trying to develop strategies to recover wild salmon up in Maine. I think I said this during the interview, that I, I, in, in the years I've worked in conservation, natural resource management, the real, the real work goes on locally. You know, we, we would write these regulations and, and I've already said this, but we, we'd call it shelf art. You'd spend three years coming up with a strategy, and it would go on a shelf, and no one would ever look at it again. And it's a little bit of a frustration with, with any job. But, you know, we did a lot of good things for natural resources. So, uh, I was a Peace Corps volunteer many years ago. Um, I lived in New Bedford. Uh, my office was the Customs House downtown, and I was in the federal building for a while. Um, I've been, I, I grew up in, in Texas. Uh, I haven't been there for quite a while, just from work. Um, still have family there, but I've, I've been in and out of, um, uh, well, I've been here in New Bedford for quite a while. And I first moved to New England and worked, lived down in Westport for a while and up in Maine. So, uh, uh, had quite a varied career. But I'm excited, uh, and I was really, again, um, you know, I, um, yeah. I, I still, you know, just working on natural resource conservation. I used to, I, I, we would tell people, you know, we don't manage the atmosphere, we don't manage the ocean, we don't manage fish. We're trying to manage people's behavior and, you know, trying to work with people to, you know, come together and find a solution. Obviously, there's regulations that you gotta, and, and I'm gonna come up to speed with, with those as quick as I can. Um, and I think I'll do that pretty quickly, but, yeah.
Excellent. I appreciate that, Mr. Minton. I wanna very, very much say thank you for answering the advertisement and utilize our commission, learn everything you need to learn. They are a really good commission that's in place right now, and they've been at the mercy without an agent for a while now. Um, so I know they're looking forward to having an agent. But it's a great commission. Um, I, I frequent their meetings, and they're very passionate about our community and making sure things are done the right way. But they're in a situation where we're not going to shut people down. We're here for conversations and we're here for respectful progress. But follow the laws, follow the Wetland Protection Act to the T and have the conversations.
Well, and again, I'm, I'm excited. I just kind of, you know, I just saw the advertisement and answered it, and, um, I'm excited and I thank the board and, you know, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, yeah.
Mr. Minton.
Mark, welcome. And you, you know, the regulatory piece of it's obviously very important, but I think what would be helpful in, you know, working with the commission is we've got Lake Street, which is a great natural resource, but it's, it's buried in weeds and there's problems there. And we're trying to do it on our own, um, you know, with the volunteers. But if there's, if you see opportunities, you know, as an agent to, with resources that are out there and things of that, you know, please keep your antenna up for that or other projects in town where, you know, you might have sightlines into how to solve some of the problems that we have, especially on Lake Street there. I think, you know, if you can lean into that, that would be great, you know?
And I, and I appreciate any direction that, that you have or suggestions for things like that. I think, uh, talking to Mr. Kelly, one of the things we spoke about was, uh, I did some grant review. We, uh, the shop I was with was NOAA. Originally, it was very small, so we did everything from permit review to grant reviews. And, and so I'm, you know, since we, I had the interview thinking about possibly different sources of funding. I don't know if they're out there, but I know things, river herring. I worked on, um, some of the, um, not directly with the Assaw Mill Restoration Project, but subsequently, you know, this restoration of herring runs. And I know that there's money out there for that kind of work. And I think, you know, you get into the watershed, it's all connected. So I think, you know, some, I'm, I will say I can write. I, I think I used to be, I used to be able to write, you know, and I still can. And I think some creative writing, looking at pots of money, and I still know quite a few people within NOAA to reach out, like, what's coming, where, you know, is there money out there? No guarantee, but, you know, someplace to start. And I'm excited about Acushnet. I just, you just see the changes going on down here on the south, you know, coast, everywhere, you know, development and just, you know, the need to, you know, stay ahead of that and, you know, and, you know, it's a great town. I love driving. I go out of my way to take the backroads home any time I can.
Great restaurants, great ice cream.
Oh, I gotta stay away from the creamery. I, I just...
We, we got a couple of different facilities here that can accommodate anything that you want, right? And we have some great restaurants as well, so for a small community, we, we do, we do things right here.
Yeah. I, I know of Captain's Place and, uh, but I know I can't go to the, uh, the creamery or you want.
There's another one further north that you might wanna try. Get some clam cakes over there, just saying. So, I mean, it's just, it's, it's, we, and we have some really good people that are owners of our, our local eateries too. So we got some great farm stands in Acushnet as well, um, to stop by and pick up some fruits and vegetables and things of the like. And, and all the owners are just great people, so spend some of your money here in Acushnet. Don't be afraid to take out that wallet.
Always. I, um, I, um, in my career, I think, and I hope, you know, continue, I think one of the, you know, I, I enjoy working with people. You know, I like to think that, you know, I get along with people and, you know, so looking forward to, to, you know, working with the community, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, do you need a motion?
Do you want a motion to?
To appoint.
Can I just speak straight away?
Yeah.
Uh, you're actually the reason I came, even though the street thing happened and from the conservation, I just wanted to say thank you for coming. And then I think I can speak for everybody, and I was looking forward to having, like they said, we've been way underhanded. And it's gonna be a great, and now we got two sides, 'cause I was a fisherman too.
You go.
Subject to the recommendation of the Conservation Commission, I need a motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint Mark Minton as a conservation, a part-time conservation agent.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Congratulations, you just got appointed.
All right.
All right.
I'll see you at the beginning of the week.
Beginning of the week.
Wait, what are you talking about? I thought Eric was gonna bring him up the hill and show him his...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
They got a meeting in 26 minutes, so, uh...
You probably can. Yeah. We don't have to leave that.
All right, we gotta get to busy with the police.
Yep. Uh, next item, Police Chief Assessment Center Discussion Review of Matters presented. Chief, good evening. Let's see, we have some updates on what we talked about at last meeting?
Uh, yes.
Some more information here?
Um, yeah. Uh, we, you know, just to recap, um, at the last meeting when we discussed it, the board had voted to, um, um, put in the requisition, uh, for a department promotional exam, uh, with the education experience attachment. Uh, I was able to put that requisition into Civil Service. Um, they have sent back a delegation agreement, um, for the town to examine. I guess the process is the town reads it over, reviews it, uh, signs off, sends it back to Civil Service. Uh, they sign off and send it back. And that delegation agreement gives the town the ability to contract with a, um, a vendor that would actually give, uh, the Assessment Center, uh, for the next police chief, which for those of you that don't know the assessment, not necessarily you, but just maybe people that are watching, the Assessment Center is basically, um, a pretty intensive day-long interview where there's a number of, uh, number of exercises, I'm sorry about that, uh, number of exercises and role-playing and things of that nature. Um, there were a number of questions that came up last, uh, came up since last meeting in regards to how the town proceeded. I had a brief conversation with Mr. Gasper and Mr. Kelly a few times as well. Unfortunately, some of those questions I don't have answers to. Um, I reached out to the five contacts I have at Civil Service and no one has responded as of yet. Um, I guess the biggest question, um, you know, I, I think we need to finalize that RFP, um, to put that out. And the question was, do we have to wait for the delegation agreement to come back from the state to, to put out the RFP? Um, and, and the simple answer right now is I don't know. But the RFP actually is not, I haven't reviewed anything. We have a number of samples, including the one that was done five years ago, um, from, from the Town of Acushnet. Uh, Mr. Kelly found some more recent ones. So we just gotta, you know, pretty much finalize that. I anticipate getting these answers, you know, relatively soon. Um, but if the delegation agreement, you know, needs to be reviewed, you know, outside of, outside of this building, State Town Council, I would recommend that, you know, we, we put that out to them, uh, so we can, we can move as soon as we get these answers from Civil Service. My, my guess, and again, it's only an educated guess, is that, um, we, this Civil Service sent us the delegation agreement, is that we, we can move forward on that, um, you know, to get that, they get squared away. But that, again, that's my educated answer, well, without having the answer directly from Civil Service. We don't wanna get ourselves into, you know, it's not cool, like, some of the communities have recently, so. Uh, but I would at least put it out for review, um, to, uh, if, if need be, to Town Council. It seems like it's pretty much a boil, a boil-plate document. Um, I do, do not have a copy of the delegation agreement that came back last time, you know, five years ago, you know, to compare side by side to see, you know, what's changed, what hasn't. I, I would suggest to you that probably not much has changed. Um, but that's, that's pretty much where we're at, uh, at now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So while we're on the subject matter of the delegation agreement, I, I did get that copy from you and, and I, I did read through it pretty thoroughly. And this, obviously, Town Council's gonna have to take a look at this gentleman and get back to us. But it does name Mr. Hinckley, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, as the delegation administrator inside of this draft. I'm gonna call this a draft, and I guess maybe you just used the name to plug in there, but it's named several different times. Honestly, I don't believe any, any member of the Board of Selectmen is qualified to be part of the delegation administrators.
As the appointing authority, when I put the requisition in with Civil Service, um, they just pull that from the head of the appointing authority, which is, which is the chairman. We can, we, I'm sure we can alter that. Uh, I would imagine, Mr. Kelly, uh, I don't wanna speak for anybody, but we can, we can do that work.
Yeah, so I, I just, I just wanna, you know, I think that's important. And then, and then I know that through an email that you sent out, the, we're, the composition of the, you know, the, the 80/20 thing goes along, and you gave us some chats that doesn't show police chief. And I know you said something about a September 1st deadline, 'cause HRD's waiting to develop those standards and, you know, the rankings, I guess, and is it gonna remain 80/20? So that'll change in the delegation agreement, if they change things.
Potentially, yes.
Right? So I think if we, if, if, Chief, it's, you're the experienced one here, if this is something, the delegation agreement is something that, you know, outside of a few modifications that need to be made, if we wanna be proactive and send this to Town Council to review it and let him take a quick look at what the language is inside of this, and then at least when the chief gets a response, there's only a couple of things that we would need to change to expedite this process, right? Um, as far as the delegation agreement. I did have a conversation, because I'm very concerned, I mean, the chief's departure, I think, is September 6th, 5th or 6th, right? And, and his email, he gives us, they, they might get, not get back to us until September 1st. That's a huge concern, right? So I was trying to coordinate with the chief, figuring this out, and I'm like, well, we're not getting a new chief until, you know, November, which is, you know, pretty far away. But it kinda puts us in a, in a bad position. So I asked the chief if he could contact Civil Service and, as he alluded to, to see if we could put out an RFP. You know, maybe we leave out the 80/20 thing, 'cause we're not sure about the composition of the 80/20, but can we, uh, go out for an RFP, get those in and start processing that? Because that's a fifteen, whatever day we put on an RFP, I don't know if there's a timeframe that exceeds fifteen days, or can we put a minimum fifteen days for a return on an RFP? But then there's a period of time, from what I understand...
Advertising.
That's the advertising period of time, is what I'm talking about, right? For how long it sits out there for an RFP. So if it's fifteen days, if that is mandated by somebody that says thirty days that we don't, we're not aware of, right? And it's just, we, the hand's getting kicked out too far. Based on the conversations that the chief and I had, I said, well, it, maybe it's, it's in our best interest if we can go out for the RFP. You know, the 80/20 thing, I think we can incorporate, incorporate that once we figure out who is gonna be the Assessment Center, right? And then we give them the delegation and say, 'cause I think it says in here that they have to abide by all of this in Civil Service and everything else. So at that point, once we pick somebody, right, we give them this and say, this is the rules of the Assessment Center, this is what you're gonna abide by. We could plug that in some, once the chief gets that response. But we, we need to be able to, you know, walk and chew bubble gum at the same time here. We can't wait for Civil Service to give us a ranking composition of if it's gonna be 80/20. If it's 80/20, fine, but let's get the RFP out, 'cause we have time, we have deadlines that, quite honestly, our back's against the wall, right? The ties are in our favor. So I, I, I'm just trying to expedite everything as fast as we can, get this over to Town Council for review as a draft, just to see what his comments are, if he's got anything to add or subtract. Get an RFP, and I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the conversation that I kinda babble around with the chief, right, is, is, the board's, it's been brought to our attention a couple of different times about, um, you know, second-in-command. Um, I know, um, based on my conversations with Chief Richmond, that if, if we were gonna do a consider, um, in the Assessment Center, it's a lot less money to add that into the RFP for a second-in-command. Then they add in a couple of credits, I guess, for the chief. I'll let you speak more on that in a second. The board needs to consider that before we just send out an RFP for a special, an Assessment Center just for chief. What I'm bringing to the table right now is that the concerns over numerous chiefs, as the chief alluded to in our last meeting, several chiefs have been talking about second-in-command. If it's only an extra thousand bucks to do a second-in-command versus another ten grand somewhere else down the road, does the board wanna? As long as it doesn't hinder the timeline of us getting this thing out by adding a second-in-command, if it does, forget about it now, but if it doesn't and we can bang this all out at once, is there an appetite for the board to say, and you don't have to be done tonight, for a second-in-command? And I talked to the chief, and just because we do the Assessment Center for the chief and a second-in-command, doesn't mean that the Board of Selectmen have to appoint a second-in-command. That second-in-command spot, again, is, I believe, it's the same two years as a sergeant's exam. We're doing a sergeant's Assessment Center. It allows us to hold those sergeants, the ranks of those sergeants for at least two years. If we, if we don't have the funding or we don't feel it's appropriate to appoint, it's on the table for two years, but we're open to do it whenever we want to follow in two years.
I think that's a great idea. Yes.
Okay. So I, I think that we need to look at that now, Chief, because you just heard yes and yes, right?
Yes.
For the second-in-command, if, as long as it's not gonna hinder our timeframe and make things more complicated for the Assessment Center, right, and H, and HRD? Because you also said, because we don't have a job description in place for whatever we decide we're gonna name it, is it gonna be a captain? Is it gonna be a lieutenant? Is it gonna be a deputy chief? That's at our privilege somewhere else down the road, but it has to be described in the Assessment Center, I would imagine, a position. But we also gonna forward that to Civil Service for approval, because we're a Civil Service department. That's what I'm talking about, timeframes. If Civil Service is gonna make this into a ninety, a hundred, and twenty-day guessing game, pass a document back and forth on a description of second-in-command, have a nice day, we ain't doing it, we, we need a chief, right? But if we can, if we can do both parallel, I think now might be that opportunity to have that in our tool chest for down the road. So if we name a new chief, we'll give him a little time to be in that position, right, without confusing the, the conversation. And then maybe six months, a year down the road, we do wanna name a second-in-command and put somebody in there for the assistance of the chief, right? and put somebody in there for the assistance of the chief, right? But to try to do both at the same time, it's just too much reshuffling of the deck. But I just wanted to bring that up because it has been something that's been discussed with this board, previous boards and things of the like. And I know funding's an issue, but we can have that discussion offline with the town administrator as well. I think now's the time to do it, based on what I know about the police department and the accreditations and the certifications that we've just gone through post. That's gonna require a whole another position, quite honestly, with post. And the day body cams come, screen and video footage, that's a job all in itself, right? So I think that that second in command, you know, might make more sense today than what it would have been two, five, 10 years ago. So if, if the board, and I think we said yes to that, so we just need answers on whether or not we could do an RFP. I think now we need to look at the RFP that we got from you from five years ago, right? And we might have to modify that. However we do that, we have to, I'm gonna leave that up to you, Chief, to figure out how we do that in the timeframes and come up with a job description. I think this board's gonna need to figure out, you know, what is that job description? Because you can't just do a blanket bill, you know, it's gonna be, you know, blank position. Civil Service is gonna know, is it a captain, is it a lieutenant, is it a deputy chief, right?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'll speak to that September 1 deadline. The September 1 deadline is, not that, we don't have to necessarily wait till September 1 to get expedited. That September 1 deadline is saying that the, their guidelines will be available for assessment centers being held after September 1. So we may, we're gonna get notification earlier. Now, to your point on the assessment center, we're adding, potentially adding a, we'll call an executive officer for lack of a, you know.
Title for now.
For easiest, for easier. That is among the questions that I have, that I, that I have not got an answer on from Civil Service, is if we decide to even pursue that right now, was that going to delay our attempt to, to try to get the chief's assessment center done in a timely fashion? But certainly, that's something we need an answer to because that would have to be part of the RFP that went out. Case in point, when we needed the assessment center five years ago, we had a conversation after the assessment center with the assessors and the facilitator, just, you know, was given as a, as a chief's example. We just asked, you know, out of curiosity, what would this taken them to make it, you know, chief, deputy chief? And we were told, you know, it would've been one more, it would've been one more exercise. We did six exercises, there would've been a seventh. It would've cost the town, you know, the, about that, that, that number, around a thousand dollars more, eight hundred to a thousand dollars more. It would've cost the offices an additional test fee. Like if they wanted to test for deputy chief and chief, it would've been two fees instead of one. So it's like, you know, another hundred and fifty dollars per, per person. So I'm not sure if we can, like I say, wait on the answers. The, to create the position, there's a little bit of, there's a process that goes with that. There's a form we send along, our own job description. To be honest with you, that is boilerplate stuff for, for, for job description, for debt. Whatever you wanna call executive officer, it's gonna be basically the same job. You know, it's gonna be, you know, and it's gonna be a non-union managerial exempt position with all the responsibilities that the chief currently has, no matter what you call it. So that's, again, those questions are out there. Hopefully we'll get answers relatively soon. I'll follow up with some phone calls tomorrow if I don't get anything by midday. And hopefully, you know, I'll have some answers. But in the meantime, I would strongly recommend, like I said, send, send the delegation agreement to Town Council, so at least get that preliminary. If we need to change, you know, you know, the contact person on the town side, you know, we can always do that on the fly when we send that back to, to, to Civil Service. If we gotta change the percentage, we can do that ourselves. Like that's not necessarily gonna be determined by Town Council, but there's a lot of, I guess, lack of a better term, legalese in there, that I think would be better suited to being reviewed by, by Town Council and, you know, get a process, get that process going.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if I could just bring one more thing to the board's attention that for consideration, while I have the chief here as well. So, Chief, you're working on all of these components, right, figuring this out, to try to expedite the process.
I'm doing my best, yes.
Stay in communication with the town administrator. If we need to do a future meeting, we don't need to wait two weeks, Mr. Chairman. On the yard watch, you can call a meeting whenever you want, as long as Mr. Warner and I can be here, especially for something as important as this.
Yes, sir.
And then the other thing that I had a conversation with the chief on is the, we had a conversation the last meeting, Selectmen Warner had, had brought it up about, you know, not having one of the sergeants that are in, going for the assessment center as a, you know, an interim chief. And I agreed oh hotly with that for the optics, whole part of it, right, and leaning, tilting the scale one way or another. And I know it's such a minutia you had talked about, it's not even a point, might be a half a point for a two-month period.
It might not even be that.
And then I looked into the Civil Service stuff, because I, I'm not, you know, obviously at the chief's pedigree of Civil Service experience, but after doing some due diligence on it, I, I asked the chief if what I found was to be correct, and he believes it's to be correct. And you can just let me know if I'm misspeaking here, Chief, is for somebody to act as an acting chief, interim chief, however we wanna call it, it would be the most senior sergeant by Civil Service standards.
It certainly looks that way. And to be honest with you, in my opinion, like from my point of view, I consider a moot point because the senior sergeant, in the rare instances I've gone away in the last four and a half, five years, where I've, you know, I've traveled, I put the same person in charge and that's the senior sergeant, Sergeant Tom Caru. I put him in charge and I do that, you know, while I have confidence in, in, in all, all six of my sergeants that they handle, you know, operationally, things that come up when I'm not here. But I, I like to stay, I like to stay consistent. I just, you know, my own logic was he was, you know, he was number two the last time, you know, on the, on the, on the list when I got the job. It just seemed, it seemed like the logical thing to do. And so my point is it's a moot point because that's who I, if the board asks me on September 7th, who would I, who we need, who the actor should be, it should be him, stay consistent. And I don't wanna speak for any member of the department, you know, you know, other sergeants or whatnot, but the consensus is let, let's just, you know, keep going, kinda keep things consistent is what we're going. There's no, you know, you know, I don't think anybody sees it as a, as a leg up or favoritism or trying to hook somebody up or something like that. It's just keeping things consistent.
So again, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would ask that the board consider and have the conversation with the, with the town administrator, to have a conversation with the chief in the future about when we would put that timeline in. I don't know if it's fair to the chief or somebody that's gonna be an acting interim police chief to stick him in there the day he's leaving, right? I don't think that's in the best interest of the department. I think maybe a week or two early might work out best for us. So it gives us a small window of opportunity to think about this, but not a long window of opportunity. So again, for consideration by the board, I would like the board to at least have that consideration. And Chief, if you can just, when you're in contact with Civil Service, I don't wanna get in trouble doing an appointment with the board and.
That's one of my questions, that's outstanding with them right now.
For the.
The acting chief and the process and what we need to do.
Okay. So just, if we can button all of that stuff up and try to expedite that information over to Town Administrator's office for him to speak with us and we can keep this ball going. I don't wanna be playing a game of golf. We're trying to find a, replace you, the police chief. I'd rather be playing a game of ping pong, right? Rapid fire, just keep going and get, keeping the ball moving. We don't, we don't have time for delays, right? It's, it's not in the best interest of the department. So, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chief. And Mr. Kelly is, yeah, go ahead.
Just so the board knows, the chief and I have met and talked a couple times. I found some modern RFPs. I put notes in it. I made copies of it. I gave the chief my copies with my notes and he's gonna look through it and go through and see. I would suggest that the questions that the chief is asking Civil Service, we also send over to Town Council.
Okay.
And have him weigh in on it because he might be able to answer something a lot quicker than Civil Service is.
Yeah.
And he's dealt with Civil Service a lot in his career and.
I'll forward the email that I, that I sent them, I'll forward it to you so you have those questions.
And the, the whole issue is, like Mr. Gasper said, to get the ball rolling down the hill as quickly as possible.
Keep it moving.
Because we've got, we've gotta hit an advertising time that will put it in the various publications and then have the 15 days for the review and reply.
Yep.
Because they don't publish all the time immediately.
So, Mr. Kelly, so the procurement laws don't allow you to just go solicit three bids if this is under a certain threshold? Is this because it's public faith, be it's a different?
There's a specific, I know that Civil Service references a specific statute in, when you're using an assessment center, you have to comply with. Everybody does it the same way. It's in the RFP, the statute, I don't know it off the top of my head, but what you do and you've got to, there's, I think the chief and I went through this, a list of probably six possibles.
Yeah, we can discuss that. Out of respect for the meeting that's about to start in four minutes, I, I'm gonna just say, Mr. Kelly, contact Town Council, get them the delegation letter, change anything you need to do. And Chief, just back and forth with Mr. Kelly and we'll do this the best we can to make it happen as soon as possible.
Sounds good.
Thank you for your work, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a good night.
Any quick, any quick Selectmen announcements?
Quick Selectmen announcements, I don't know what happened to my thing, but I did get a phone call and to contact Mass DOT, I think it's District 5 of South Main Street. People are complaining about the weeds down the sidewalk on the west side of South Main Street and just quite honestly, the condition of the sidewalks and the weeds that are, I said, it's not a town-owned road, I get it, but we can have DPW contact Mass DOT, District 5, and see if they can get somebody out here to clear the sidewalks in debris because it's becoming a safety issue with children.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Warner?
Yep.
I got a quick one. I just wanna say congratulations to Officer Colin Matten and Officer Adrian Fontz, who graduated from the police academy today. And they officially start on the Acushnet Police Force Monday. So congrats to both those gentlemen for putting in the hard work.
Mr. Chairman, in your packets, you have confirmation, the board had asked prior, that the articles concerning stormwater, over 55, et cetera, the three articles have been approved by the AG. And so we're all set with that. The town clerk sent us notification.
Excellent. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if that memo that we got sent is current for this town meeting that was just passed, the stormwater, the new stormwater by law that was just passed. That's referring to the older, and I don't think it was even stormwater. I think that was a sewer bylaw.
That was a sewer bylaw.
So I think there's a correction to that memo that needs to be from, from the town clerk's office to our office. I think there was a, the correction needs to be made to that. So I don't know if that was done and that's, because the town meeting just ended a 30-day period ago. The Attorney General normally takes 90 days, so just, just for your knowledge, I was gonna bring that up to you later. But CNN, you brought it up.
Yep.
I think that needs to be done.
Maybe the Attorney General's office is actually doing.
Doing their jobs. All right. Gentlemen, we have two executive sessions. Executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate eminent domain 157 South Main Street. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body, and the board will not return to public session at the conclusion of executive session. And we have executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, AFSMI steelworkers, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body, and the board will not return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. Is there a motion to go into both these executive sessions?
So, second.
All those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
I am a yes. We are in executive session.